We're here with Victor Vasquez at the beautiful Miami Springs Golf and Country Club. Councilman Vasquez, thank you for joining us and I appreciate this is the second time we do an interview. So appreciate you joining us. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for taking the time and giving us the opportunity to talk to, uh, talk to the camera, but also through talking through the camera, talking through the folks that you have, you know, who access your site and so forth. So every opportunity that to speak to voters is an opportunity for voters to get us, to get to know us a little better.
Sure. And so, you know, obviously the folks in Miami Springs have got to know you over the last, you know, couple of years since when you ran, you've now been a councilman and you're interacting with the folks. So, but for folks who may not have met you before, tell us a little bit about your background and let us know kind of, what led you to Miami Springs politics?
Well, I've been, I've been in Miami Springs now for over 11 years. Before that I lived in Hialeah and before that I lived up north. And so, um, we moved here in 2011. Always loved this place. My sister used to live here. My, my, you know, I have family in Virginia Gardens and we always found it a really nice place. We got lucky, right? As, as, as we like to say in Miami Springs, we got lucky. But I've always been a person who's been involved in his community, wherever I lived, uh, in the church, in Boy Scouts, at PTAs. And so, and my wife and I have always, I come from a humble family. My, my parents were factory workers in New York. They raised six kids. My father was able to buy a home through the VA. He was a World War II veteran. And, and they were garment workers. So they taught us about the importance of, you know, having unions and protecting, you know, protecting their, their contracts and, uh, and, and raise, uh, raise six kids. And, and, uh, and so through their experience, particularly my, my mother, I learned the importance of being a good neighbor and always having your door open and, uh, and, and always being part of a community. And so I'm a person of service. I've learned that from them, of serving other people. Uh, I served my country. I served, uh, in the United States Air Force during the Vietnam War. Not in combat, but I was injured and I had to be retired. I lost part of a leg. So I had to learn how to walk again at 19 years old. Uh, and, and from there I, I, I got a PhD in history, but I never graduated from high school because I didn't have enough credits. Just young things, you know, messing around. But, but I, I joined the Air Force. I took the exams and from there I went to a community college and I, and I did all this. I worked in higher education for three decades. I was a professor of history in Miami Day College. I retired last August and, uh, and, and, and so I, I decided to put my service that I've already been doing in the community. Um, I was very, I'm very active with the American Legion, Babcock, Salomon Post, Hialeah. Uh, we're in the, we're in the midst of renovating our war memorial. So I've been doing that for a few years, uh, supporting Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts for 10 years. It seemed like a logical conclusion to next step to get involved in, uh, in the city's politics and bring some of that, some of that thrust, some of that energy and, and care for our communities. And so now I've decided to, uh, to take this step, next step to run for county commission, District Six. It's a position that's being vacated. Uh, and, uh, and it's, 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 I think that the, that the district should be represented by someone who, who lives the daily lives of the residents, who, who will sit at the table, bring their issues to the conversation. Someone who has a heart of service, right? I am not a special interest guy or, you know, I, I shy away from that. I think that the district has some potentials and some challenges. And I think that the county has some really significant, uh, challenges at this point in time. And I'll, I can share with you a few of the things that are like priorities for me.
But I was going to get into, you know, as you're talking about going for, for the county commission. You know, you're, you're, you're talking about, hey, you want to serve and you want to serve, I guess, at a higher level, but you know, it gets a lot noisier, it gets a little dirtier, it gets a little, you know, when you go into the county commission. What, you know, what made you just says, you know, yeah, I want to go into the county commission versus, you know, hear the community and, and, you know, was it more just a desire to serve or, or any big issues that really tell, I gotta do this?
Yeah, it's, it's a fair question. So when you're on the committee, when you're in, when you're, when you're in city council or city commission in every other city, we interact a lot with the county, right? And there are always issues about, you know, rules and, and how things impact and taxes and how they get distributed. Most, uh, most Miami Springers know we pay, you know, pay sizable taxes, but most of that goes to the county and to the public schools. And so, um, it also, it seemed like we needed some additional voices, especially since the person that was there was retiring, to overlook, you know, all of the needs of the, of the, of the different cities and parts of population. It, it's, so it's really just a way to serve the city and the rest of the district at a place where, uh, big important decisions about our funding, uh, gets made. For instance, we had this issue, it came up, uh, last year. It's always been the last couple of years about the bed tax. And the bed tax is a, is a county decision. And for those who don't know what it means is that, uh, the, the hotels in Miami Springs pay taxes to the county. But one of the issues that we came across last year was to find out that 40% of our police service is taken up by the hotels. So that doesn't seem like a fair trade. And there are other cities that are in that situation. So what I see for our, our district and for the county is we've got a couple of major challenges coming. I've had an opportunity to serve with the Miami Day County League of Cities as a, as an alternate representative to, to the city. And, and one of the things that struck me is number one, we're projecting a million people coming down here soon.
And when you say a million people, we're not talking about tourists. You're talking about
No, no, I'm talking about
Moving and becoming residents in
Residents
We're talking about Miami Day County.
Miami Day County. And, and so immediately that raises questions for me. Where are they going to live? Where are they going to work? Right? What are the, what's the impact in terms of our logistics, our infrastructure, schools, water, um, and so forth, transportation? Um, there are only so many places you could build. Even the realtors will tell you that we have literally just about run out of space to build single family homes. So what kinds of housing are we looking at? Right? And so, um, I think that we know what the problems are. And I've seen those conversations at the county, uh, when I've been to meetings and at the League of Cities. It's what are we going to do about it? Right? And so one of our most famous early Americans, I'm a historian, but I'm almost firmest, early Americans, Benjamin Franklin, uh, used to say, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. Right? And so we know what the problems are. It's, I like to see, for instance, a, a, a really detailed, um, focus on post-COVID economic development and prosperity in the county. So what does that mean? Okay. So what kinds of, what kinds of jobs would we want to attract? What kinds of economy do we want to have? You know, back in the seventies, Maurice Ferriache talked about the global city. We've done that, right? We've done that with tourism, but the rest of the county has expanded, right? And so how do we, how do we attract the kinds of businesses that we want here? What kind of certainty do we offer investors to, to that they know what the ordinance are? You know, we, we talk about, uh, higher paying jobs. What does that mean? What are those jobs that aerospace and technology? What could, what, what can we do to incentivize them? Right? And, and also how do we, how do we, how do we build that out? Right? Uh, because along with that, I mentioned the moving down here. What about housing? Where are people going to live? Right? I just mentioned that we're going to have limited about, limited space for building single family homes. You have to look at multi-level homes. But what is affordable? Affordable is what you can pay to be able to stay in your home or your apartment comfortably. Right? Our rates are going up. Uh, I'd like to see us, and it's happened, I've seen it here in Miami Springs and in other places in West Miami, where you have, uh, folks have been in their homes for a long time. They're older. They don't want to have the upkeep of a house, but they want to stay in their neighborhood.
Right.
And are there places for them to live? I think we need to really take, uh, a strategic perspective on this. Um, and a third issue related to those two is transportation. We had the conversation here a few months ago about the, uh, the rail transit and all these things. And, and I said to the commissioner, the vice chair, uh, I was there a day or two when I spoke, I said, because we were all concerned about the BURs area and the expansion and taking away the density, uh, uh, control of the cities, that I believed in rail transportation. I, I grew up in a city where you could get anywhere on rail transportation, but I always found it difficult. When I first moved down here, I couldn't get to my job if I wanted to use rail. But I do understand the need for the rail transportation, but I need to see some interconnectivity because people are going south and west, right? And so I don't, we, we need a, a more comprehensive plan to build density around some of the areas where the trains are. But that's a local issue, right? So South Miami may have one perspective on it, Pinecrest on another. Certainly Miami Springs, we said, not, not in this corner because it impacts our single family residences. But we also have to develop incentives for ridership, right? Because the Fed's not going to give us money for, for expanding transportation. We can't guarantee a ridership. And so those are the, the interconnected issues that I look at and say, what we need is, we need a plan. We need a more detailed plan, focused plan on this. We know it's coming. We know people are coming. We know we're going to need the transportation. We know we're going to need the housing. How do we plan for this? Private prop, you know, private, uh, and government, you know, partnerships to expand on this. And, and also, um, I'm, I'm concerned about safety issues, of course. And, and how do we improve the policing situation? You know, a little bit of the rise of crime in certain areas. I like keeping areas green, right? So protecting our environment. I was just in a, in an event today about, uh, about healthcare and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, in Miami and how climate change is affecting the health of Miami. So, you know, it's balancing those things, but you have to look at it as a, as a comprehensive lens. And I think that that's what, uh, we've needed sometime. I think there are people who have pieces of this around rail. The mayor's been talking about affordable housing. But it needs to come together in a comprehensive way.
Yeah, you, you hit on, on several issues. Uh, one of the definitely hot learned issues is, is housing. And so there's, you said it perfectly, and this has come up in the county. I've written about it. The single family home in Miami Day County is an endangered species.
Pretty much.
And we're seeing the market from a pricing standpoint, obviously, you know, the price has gone sky high over the last year. Just to buy a regular, you know, I think we have a free one today that I saw for around $5.50. Like over half a million dollars for
I heard today that it's the, the, it's, it's, the sales have gone up just a little bit.
Yeah.
Just a little bit.
Um, and then you have, um, uh, I think the average one was over $650. Here in Springs, it's, it's, uh, the, the level of increase has been astronomical, right? So I look at the perspective of where are my kids? You know, my daughter's going to go to college now. When she graduates and gets her career going, yeah, I hope that's over to, to be here in Springs. Holy cow, she's going to afford it.
And, 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 and it's a very good point because I have the same situation. I got a 24-year home. And, you know, they're in a relationship, you know, with, you know, they're, they're looking and they're thinking about and, and clearly, priced out of Miami Springs. Uh, Hialeah is just building some seven, eight story apartments right off of, uh, Hialeah Drive and so, they looked at them, still a little bit priced. And, and then you've got, uh, how do local communities handle, right? So, um, I, I took it to a girlfriend's house the other day, right off of East Hialeah. You know, and then she was telling me that they remember how, when all that was single family houses. And her girlfriend lives in the back of her mother's house where they have three little, uh, three efficiencies, right?
Yeah.
And so, you know, different cities have made, uh, different, um, um, you know, uh, rules about this. But, but they're now getting to the point where, and I see that in Hialeah, where I used to live up near, uh, uh, Red Road. Uh, that whole area used to be where the Salvation Army was. That's all, uh, four and five story, uh, buildings. So it, it's, there's no, in, in some areas, there's no place to go but up, right? But what does up mean? Right? Because, um, you know, the, the, all of those high rises that we have, for instance, on the beach and, and in Miami have changed. For instance, I went to speak to a group of firefighters. It's changed completely how firefighting is done. And safety and so forth. So the more we expand south and west, we're going to have to be looking at this sort of multi-level. Maybe not more than two or three stories, but, but still you've got to have the financing. And then where are people going to work? Right? So my daughter works at the Port of Miami, you know, coming from Homestead or somewhere in between, without, uh, you know, a light rail or whatever, it's going to be built difficult. So these are challenges that we're facing.
What, and as you, as you bring up going up, uh, you know, gas prices have gone through.
Yes.
And so we have, and for the record, it's not like, you know, be county commission, we're asking for anyone county commission to solve that. But like, but just the reality of getting from point A to point B has gotten more expensive. So living in a place like Miami Springs, it's so central, the value of that has now increased.
Yes.
Because you don't have to travel so far to get to most of the popular places because you're so, so central. Someone in Homestead now has to pay a whole lot more to get from point A to point B.
Yes.
And I guess the second point that you're talking about in terms of rail, it drives me nuts. Every time I see the busway down in South Dade. And I know this is out of District Six and all that, but it, I'm like, why in the world didn't they extend the, the rail through all that property? And, and, and free up that, that kind of, that underlying wave, if you will, and extend the rail, you know, further south to, to service all those folks who need to get from, 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 from that area.
Yeah. And, and one of the reasons for that is, is funding because rails are funded by the federal government. And the federal government needs that, and the Fed's need to see the, the density of people that are going to travel. So it's almost like the chicken and the egg. So the potential is there, right? But, but that takes planning and that takes making sure that there are hubs along the way that have the kind of, uh, of density that will incentivize people to get on a train. I know what you're talking about because I used to work at, I used to teach at the, at the Homestead campus. So on the morning I'm zipping down and at, at 6:15, um, you know, the, the turnpike is, is backed up. And, and so, uh, you know, those are things that we need to, uh, really consider as we move forward. I'm talking about, you know, we, we, I, I once had a, uh, a, an economist talking to us when I used to work at Temple University about, uh, about American, uh, corporations and, 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 and folks that run corporations. We're always thinking about the next quarter, right? And he said, and the Asians think about the next quarter century. What I'm talking about is the, the plan for the next quarter century, right? Because it's not, we need to start it. We need to have a plan to move forward. And of course, plans can always be adjusted, but you have to have the outlook and the perspective. Like I said, we know what the problems are. Right? It's really putting that energy focused on how we're going to resolve this between the county and the local government. Cause you've got different, you know, 34 municipalities and all these incorporated territories that have to be accounted for, right? And their wishes, right? And what they prefer to see, right? And, and fortunately we, we had that conversation with the, with the, uh, about what the impact. I understood technically what he was talking about with the circle.
Right.
In terms of density, but changing our density down that, down that east. And now you've got some territories on the other side. We don't really have, you know, it's now with the, all these incorporations. I mean, how is that going to impact, uh, this conversation? But the point is, if we don't deal with this transportation problem, we're going to have a problem, as Benjamin Franklin would say.
Yep.
It's just that it needs to be tweaked and, and, and there has to be significant input from the local communities as to what they want to see and what they don't want to see.
Now, you know, you bring up a great point where, uh, oftentimes, you know, the government and, and look, it's, it's, this is a committee that works with other committees. So it's not like a one person, you know, showing just wave of magic wand and everything gets done.
It's cumbersome, but it works.
It's cumbersome, uh, but, but, you know, this is what democracy looked like. And it's sometimes ugly and sometimes it's frustrating. But it's the best system in the whole wide world. Um, but you mentioned something in terms of, you know, I, and I think you nailed on something where folks are constantly, um, trying to deal with the immediate problems.
Yes.
Which are important.
Yes, yes, yes.
But hey, we also have to look into the future. What does Miami look like in 25? You know, when we say Miami, the greater Miami, Miami Day County, what does Miami Day County look like in 25 years? When my children are approaching my age, what does the county look like? And what kind of county will they be able to live in? Um, and, and I appreciate, you know, you bringing that up in terms of looking at just now. What is, you know, Miami Day County in 25 years? So on that note, what are some of your thoughts, you know, above transportation and, and housing? Any other thing else in terms of looking into the future of things that we need to start dealing with now, uh, as we look down to 25 years?
Well, we've got to deal with, uh, with water, right? Basic stuff, right? How do we get water? How do we get water to people, right? Safe drinking water? And that's, that's a challenge, you know, where do you, where do you, where do you dig down for?
You're going right into the history of Miami Springs. It probably gets all started.
As we, as we approach the Everglades and, you know, the, the, the urban development area, right? And, and how the, for instance, the firefighters were sharing with me that, uh, you know, you have to look at different rules. Because for instance, in Miami Springs, you have a fire plug and it has to be at a certain distance. But if you're out in the west part of the county, um, you might have to, the fire plug has to be, has the, the pipes have to stretch further because you don't have that kind of, of density, right? So these are, these are things sometimes that we don't, as we expand, that we have to look at, right? Roadways, right? Um, you know, you know, getting in and out of, uh, of, uh, you know, to deal with our infrastructure. And so, um, you know, I'm excited about the future. I really am. You know, you mentioned the thing about gas. And I think, I think most people understand, even though that we like to blame the government, that's the federal government. You know, the left is in the federal government. In England is the right is in the federal government. In Italy, it's, it's everybody's in the government. So it's everyone's fault. These, you know, COVID was significant. This is a, this is a, you know, a, a chain, a chain issue here. Uh, China closed down itself. And, and so all the supply is coming up. I, I saw gas go down a couple of pennies the other day. So I, I, I'm hopeful about that. But I think that if we get, you know, like thinking people, um, you know, the, the, the complexion of the commission is going to change dramatically between now and the next two years. You're going to have six new commissioners and in two years you're going to have an election, seven new commissioners.
It's going to change.
It's going to be a dramatic change because the term was that we, we, uh, we imposed, uh, you know, a few years ago, the voters did. Uh, we're going to have an elected sheriff. I don't know what that's going to mean yet. I'm not sure how that's going to work in terms of the county police resources. You know, the voters wanted it, but they didn't say too much about what they wanted, right? They just want to elect the sheriff. So how is that going to impact our, 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 our safety and, and crime issues and resources, right? Is that all going, all the, all the police and resources going to go to the, to the new sheriff? Or, or is the mayor going to have some control of that? Uh, those are things that have to be worked. I don't have too many ideas on that, but these are definitely big changes.
So, um, you know, you talked a little bit about our, you know, how Commissioner Gober brought up the RTZ and, um, and its impact and obviously the, so the BURs section is going to be out of it. Some of it to me makes sense. I'm thinking there's a project in Coral Gables of all places. Think about it, very code restrictive place, or let's call it, that's what its reputation is for. And they have a, uh, Rome Douglas and US One, this huge building right there by, by, by transportation. So, and part of the sales pitch there is, hey, you can, you can work here and, and easy transportation to and from. The other part, I guess, one of, let's call it a personal thing is, aside from, let's say, Brickell and downtown, um, I've always heard it's like, where's a fun place to, you know, the fun place to go here is the beach.
Right, 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 right.
And there's no rail or Metro mover or anything that gets you out to, to, to the beach. It would be incredibly expensive, but from a, a practical standpoint, you want people to use it, want to get, hey, the tourists to come and use it. Can I get people to, to and from the beach, in my opinion, in terms of, you know, the, the, let's call it the number one destination why people come down here is for our beautiful beaches.
Sure.
Um, so that's one question. Obviously if I put my other hat, put myself as a Miami Beach tourist and I go, yeah, I don't want rail coming, coming into my backyard either. So, you know, there's all that.
And that's why I said, this is, uh, this is a conversation that has to happen locally and, and, uh, and, and, and countywide. Because it, it, sometimes you just have to change the mindset a little bit, right? You know, I was driving on, on 36th, I was at, I was in, uh, I was in Wynwood today and I'm driving west. And, you know, right down North Miami Avenue and, and 36th Street, you got a Target, you got a Marshalls, you got some apartments here. There's no rail there, but I'm just thinking this is, this is the kind of thing that some communities like Pinecrest in South Miami are looking at is that, um, you know, growing up in New York City, a lot of times when you got out of a subway station, you did part of your shopping on the way to the house, right?
Right.
You got the bodega, you got the, you had to go to the shoe repair and pick that up and pick up the laundry. That's kind of a, it's a little, it's a little different we have because we have stacked, uh, you know, structures. But it's working in some communities in, in South Miami, um, that, that people can, uh, not, they, they just don't go to the train to get the rail. There's a shopping mall. There are other things that make sense to them, right? May not make sense to us in Miami Springs in the sense of how our structure, you know, are now a little community, I mean, a center, a development center area. We'll see how that goes. I'm not talking about bringing a train into the, to that area, but, uh, it, 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 so there are a lot of moving parts here and there are a lot of communities that, um, you know, if, if, one thing about the beach, for instance, if, if you can, if you can, uh, if you can bring down the number of cars in the beach. Because somebody, you know, gets a, gets a train on whatever, uh, you know, downtown.
Sure.
You know, they park downtown and go to the beach. They don't want to take their car into the beach, right? And then they, you know, that, that still gives you the, the, the business, right? But then you don't have the cars, right? So these are sometimes trade-offs that people might think about and consider saying, well, you know what? Uh, maybe a light rail, uh, is, is the way to go. I've been going back in New York City, you can get to any beach, uh, by train. And, and, and so forth. So, um, it's a good point you raised. It might be another way, uh, it might be a selling point.
It's just from a, from a, a demand standpoint, you know, we're talking about a grid generation demand, you know, why, why get on the rail in the first place? You know, and, and in terms of destinations, you know, they have to be interesting destinations, not just for work, but, you know, work and
Exactly.
Yeah, really the fun place to go. Okay, maybe Brickell and, and, and downtown or Heat Game or something like that. But aside from that, not a whole lot of fun.
Well, but again, it's, it's about incentivizing.
Yeah.
You know, what, what, what makes it attract, what would make it attractive for people to want to do that, right? You got a lot of cities that have, um, all of their major sports hub are, 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 uh, one of the ways to get there is by rail. And, and in fact, people come from further out because they don't have to drive all the way in. You know, to, you know, half an hour ride or something, 35 minutes, they're, they're by their car.
Yeah.
Um, and, and, you know, I, I always thought that was a little odd when we were building the Malden Stadium. This is going to be hard because I remember going to that stadium when I used to visit my dad and, and he knew this man who used to pay 20 bucks to park in the
Yeah, you park in someone's house?
Yeah. And, and, but you're going
Build a relationship with them.
Yeah, and, but you don't have the, and, and the guy knew he was coming. He's got the spot for you. But, but that's, that's small scale, right? Um, and I think that it's, it's about how promote, how do you promote things, right? To make it, uh, you know, incentive for people to come.
Excellent. You know, I think we covered, you know, most of the, the big, uh, types of housing, RTZ. Oh, annexation. Obviously, you know, I know you have a, a different perspective there. You were at the annexation meeting.
I was, I was, yes, I was there. Um, well, first of all, you know, this, the project's been going on for almost 20 years. And, and it involves Miami Springs, Village of, uh, Virginia Gardens, Doral and Medley. And, uh, we're getting different components of this. Now, the annexation piece for Miami Springs does not have residents. Uh, the Medley ones have, and so there's some other things. But, um, it's, it's, we were there last month and, uh, we just ran out of time because there were so many other things on the agenda. And it is the, uh, and it is the chair's policy commission. So there, the, the number of, of what they need for, 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 for quorum is a little smaller. So if you lose some people, you lose the quorum. And that's what happened. We ran, ran out of time. So we're going back there on July 7th. And, uh, I mean, it still has another step to go. But, um, but we've been prepared for, for some time, even before I got on council, as to what are the things, the responsibilities, you know, police coverage and other things that we have to be responsible for. But, but there are some areas there that are going to need some work, you know, because there are some streets there that are, you know, haven't really been touched. You know, you got, you got, uh, buildings that have 10 or 12 tenants in them and different kinds of businesses and, and transportation.
And roads get far more abused. You've had those big trucks.
And they get more abused. And, and so, um, you know, what does that mean for us? I mean, of course it's, you know, there, there's some tax, uh, benefits for us as well. And so, uh, it's going to be an interesting thing. I think something more concerning that we haven't touched is that the, that the Department of Transportation wants to extend SR 112 into 36th Street.
Yes.
And, and there are some things coming up about that because, um, if, if, for those of, uh, And there are some things coming up about that, because if, for those of, for those of folks who are listening to us and watching us, what they're talking about is, if you're heading west on one twelve, you know that you exit on Thirty-Sixth Street. What the Department of Transportation is talking about is extending that over to Sheridan Street
Right.
just past the EV Hotel.
Right.
Now, if you've ever been on Northwest Twenty-Fifth, that road that goes around the airport, this is the kind of bridge that they're talking about building, and we have some concerns about that, what's that's going to do to Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street? We have a lot more businesses there than that Northwest Twenty-Fifth Street extension, and there's some hearings that are coming up. I hope that folks are paying attention, come out and express their concerns. I know the mayor has, I know the council has expressed those concerns.
So, but yeah, and that's the short term, when in the longer term, one that they floated is one that goes all the way to the eight-twenty-six, all the way to the Palmetto, so, which has caused a lot of folks
Right, right, that's the eventual extension, it's going to be, yeah. I can't imagine that going in front of the hotels.
Yeah.
On Thirty-Sixth.
It's not going to be, it just doesn't create a tourist-friendly environment for Thirty-Sixth Street, if that's the long-term vision for Miami and the airport.
Listen, I understand, I understand the county's looking at these things, right? Because, you know, this district, District Six, has the airport right in the middle of it, right? And so, you know, there's a lot of traffic going in there, there's traffic going west, east and west all the time on the Dolphin, and they have to look at ways in which to ameliorate that, right? Clearly, the expense, the expansion of Doral has created more, more, more commercial traffic, and so we have to look at these and find ways to work on this. But, you know, the other thing I did not mention is, talking about the airport and the ports, you know, I want to keep control of those in the county. You know, Tallahassee keeps taking, you know, pieces of this, these are really important hubs for us, port, the airport and so forth, that, you know, make sure that, we try to push back on that and keep as much local control as we can.
Well, Victor, we have, the election coming up is August twenty-third.
That's correct.
And early voting, do you know when the early voting is going to start?
Early voting, the ballots are going to drop in about two weeks or so.
Okay.
Yep.
So you can start voting as soon as, as early as in two weeks by mail-in?
Correct.
And then
And now that you mentioned vote by mail, it's important for folks who do vote by mail to check their status, because there was legislation that was passed earlier this year that requires you to re-register. So you need to go onto the Department of Elections site, check your voter vote by mail registration.
Okay.
Today, I got my new voter ID cards with a new, you know, but they need to check in because you may be expecting a ballot and you don't get it.
Right, so if you had previously used to getting the mail-in ballots, and are expecting it to automatically show up this year
It may not be automatically
It may not automatically show up, and you may need to re-register to get the mail-in ballot.
You know, and folks have the option always of getting a vote by mail, still going to early voting or poll, but if you vote by mail, you're comfortable doing that, make sure that you go in and check the voter election site to make sure that it's up to date, and if it's not, you can register online.
Perfect. All right, so final question I always like to ask is, why should residents vote for Victor Graskas for County Commission District Six?
Because I'm committed to us in this, in this, in this district. As I indicated, I am a person who serves and carries those voices to the county commission, and also to bring ideas, not just to, you know, make demands and say, hey, we need this, you know, here are some ideas that we bring as well.
Excellent. Victor, we really appreciate you taking your time to come out here to the beautiful Miami Springs Gulf and Country Club.
Yes, yes, I love this club.
And share your thoughts with Miami Springs residents, as well as those above and beyond. Like I always say, it goes, MiamiSprings.com gets more traffic than we have residents in Miami Springs, by the way, look at the numbers. So, you know, folks from VG and Hialeah and others who like to kind of see what's going on in our community, so again, we thank you.
And a shout-out to Hialeah, because I have Southeastern Hialeah is part of the district.
Yes, sir.
And they really have a, you know, a Leah art district, it's really excellent, and, you know, and I used to live in Hialeah.
Yeah. Well, again, we thank you very much for participating and appreciate this, and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Again, August twenty-third is the
Come out and vote, vote by mail, you know, vote by rail.
Well, come on, folks, at the end of the day, democracy only works if you go out and vote, so please go out and vote.
That is correct, that is correct.
Victor, again, thank you for your service to the city of Miami Springs, thank you so much.
Appreciate it, sir.